It's seven o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and call the city council meeting to order. Mary Jo, can you please call the roll?
Andy Sillhards.
Here.
Erin Borowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Grodick.
Here.
Meg Ryan Shakie.
Here.
Stephen Coyle.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the beloved citizens of our nation under our invisible but for the continued justice and rule.
Mayor Van Kirk has opening statements tonight.
Mr. Tansky requested that I do this evening's opening and happy to do so. Let's pray. Father, we are grateful for the chance that we have together once again as the city administration and council to discuss the business of this city. Lord, we thank you for Brooklyn and the privilege it is that we all of us get to call it home. We thank you for the newest member of council, Stephen Coyle. We think that he's joined this council. Thank you for his willingness to serve. We thank for the others that applied and were interviewed for their willingness to serve as well. It's so good to see so many engaged and involved in our community. Pray that you have blessed Stephen and his new role, help him to make wise decisions for the betterment of our city. Father, pray that you give guidance and wisdom as we make decisions. We pray that all that's done tonight will bring honor and glory to your name. We pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
We do have approval of minutes tonight? No? Oh, I'm sorry. It's like there's... I'm like, I need two minutes. Oh, before we get started with public session, is Miranda here? Miranda, sorry, I did not see you. We do have Miranda, our animal control officer, to come up and give a statement for the public.
Hi. Hello. All right. I'm here today just to quickly go over some residential concerns that we've had about our coyote populations here in Brooklyn. As we have had a lot of sightings recently, and I'm just here to assure everyone that that is completely normal. Right now, we are in mating season for coyotes. And a very big statistic that I think will go a long way to show how much of an issue this really isn't is that in the state of Ohio's history, there's been two confirmed bites on coyotes with people. Both of those bites, one of the coyotes was rabid, the other coyote had distemper, so they were both very sick. And in the entire state's history, that's the only documented instances of that. In my personal experience of doing animal control for almost 10 years, the amount of actual physical altercations with coyotes that I have, I could count on one hand. We have a really healthy population here. It's not unusual to see them roaming around. I have touched base with a coyote expert. His name is John Seepick. He's with the Cleveland Metro Parks. His advice in regards to this issue is that when residents do see coyotes, hazing them away is the best thing for them, like putting rocks or something similar, a small like that in a water bottle and shaking it to scare them off. It teaches them that behavior, that humans are scary, and they'll normally take off. So I just wanted to touch base in regards to that, that it's really not that big of a concern with our coyote population. So does anyone have any questions about them?
May I be recognized? Um, I know people are concerned about this. What about the whole thing if you have a small pet?
So I would just advise that coyotes are, they are predators. If there is an opportunity for them to try to interact with your pet, that that may happen. So just be cognizant of when you let your dog outside, that you have eyes on them, that they're leash, that they're not free roaming, especially if you have a small breed dog. It happens stands for a coyote to mistake that for perhaps a rabbit or a squirrel. But I will tell you that in my experience, the only coyotes dealing with dogs are when a coyote has attempted to enter a fenced enclosure, whether it's a food source or something similar. And in those instances, actually, the dog had killed the coyote. So it's very, very unlikely. I'll put that. All good?
Yeah, it's just one other question.
Sure.
So how long does mating season last?
Until March. So January until March. I think we got a little bit sooner, but start with that with how cold we were towards the end of December, but March, we should wrap up. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Bye.
Thank you.
We now have public session. If anyone has anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please limit your time to five minutes or less.
Rob Slattery, 6600, of U.S.A. First, I'd like to welcome Mr. Our Councilman Coyle. I think he'll do well. I have faith in you. I'd like to thank Miranda for the information about the coyotes. I'm going to quickly talk to a couple of different things. First off, the police department. And this is not a slam, and I think they do a great job. I want to add to that department. Councilman Tansky started with the question of how many officers we have, and the answer was 35. That number's deceiving. It's truthful, but deceiving. We actually have 34 right now. We have an officer that's out with an injury to his hand, and he's had his surgery, he's going to be out for some time, may need another surgery. We have another officer that's going through disability process. He's not going to come back. We have another officer that retired last week, and we have an officer assigned at the school. I'd like to see two officers at the school. We have a chief, two lieutenants, a detective on a task force outside the city, and three detectives in the bureau. That leaves 24 officers to patrol the streets. Far cry from 35. And those are the ones, those 24, are the ones going call to call to call. We're one bad situation away, and I can speak firsthand of this. I was injured in line of duty, and I was not able to come back to work. I sustained such a serious leg injury, I was forced out. It's a dangerous job. The fact is, people get hurt. And it's just a matter of the next injury, somebody's going to get hurt. Sadly, that's the truth. The past administration pretty much ignored the fact of how dangerous the city is getting and the levels of violence and crime. There was a video, and I've reminded people many times about this, where the police chief, I believe, was forced to say that the city is as safe as it was 25 years ago. I don't think there's anybody in this room that thinks that they're as safe as they were in 1998. I know I'm not. So we need more officers. I think that a safety committee, you started asking the right questions, I just, I wish you had had enough time to ask more questions. Moving on to chicken coops, I'd like to know what council people, what research you guys have done on your own, instead of just talking to a couple of residents that want them. I signed up for a three-hour certificate program on backyard chickens through the Oklahoma State University. It was a very, very informative program. There's a lot of preparation needs to go into having a safe and successful coop. All kinds of landscaping work, you have to clear around the coops. You have to secure fencing to keep out predators. There's issues about, and this is just Oklahoma laws, but I mean, I would assume other states have things, but it's not my job to dig into this, it's your job to dig into it. Possibilities of sick birds and different diseases. They have different reporting requirements for sick birds, dying birds. Where are you going to dispose of those birds? This course is $25. I suggest you guys dig in your pockets and take the course. As far as our proposed ordinance, what's the city going to do and what facilities are needed for our animal control officer? We have cat cages, dog cages. You guys are going, now we're going to have to build a chicken coop because if a chicken gets out, or they go and they find people in violation of this ordinance, they're going to have to seize the animals if there was animal abuse. There's, there's, this is just a bad idea. There's way more involved in this than is going into this proposed ordinance. Next, I'd like to talk about the fire department. At the last meeting, it was stated the price for repairs was between $208,000 and $215,000. Does this cost cover every issue in that building? Are there leaks in the roof? And I'd like to know who's responsible for the, it should, I would assume it should be yearly inspected. And if these, whoever's responsible for the inspections, if it was caught sooner, would the cost be less? $218,000 or $215,000 is a substantial amount of money. And lastly, and I'm not sure if some of the council people know about this, but I got a bunch of calls on this. And the city administration, a year ago maybe, built an office down at the service garage stating that the service director was needed down there because it was going to build morale, it was going to work on productivity. And on January 3rd, it's alleged that the service director gathered with all the workers and started screaming at them and using all kinds of foul language. Now, this past administration had a worker in the building department who swore at people, who called them liars, and you guys hired her a life coach. And you guys, okay?
Mr. Slatter, it has been five minutes. If you can wrap up your comments.
Okay, I will. You guys, you guys approved all that. You had, we sat in this council chambers and saw someone get removed and their rights violated because they were going to read a public records request, or a public record. This is a serious violation. John Verba is not a leader. He treats those workers terribly. I suggest you all go down and talk to the workers and find out about the morale problem. He didn't approve anything. He made it worse. And that's on you guys.
Anybody else for public session? We will now move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We will start this evening with the recreation board. Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. The youth volleyball league for the spring season is open for registration now from February 6th. Grades three to four coed and grades five to six coed. Players must be Brooklyn residents or students attending the school and the city limits. Resident fee $60. Teams will practice once during the week at the Brooklyn Middle School Fieldhouse. Games will be played home and away sites on Saturdays at Fairview Park, North Olmsted, Middleburg Heights. Practices begin the week of March 6th. Games begin March 25th, tentatively. Volunteer coaches are needed for all leagues. Please let us, let us know at registration if you are interested. Register online at www.brooklynrec.com. Call the rec center 216-351-5334. The next recreation board meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 24th, in the rec center meeting room, 7:00 p.m., and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have public safety. We will be hosting our organizational meeting and choosing committees for this year. That has been the main holdup for holding this public safety committee meeting. So given that information, I am hoping that the public safety committee does decide on a date for the meeting regarding the ordinance 2022-32 regarding apartment complex security, as well as ordinance 2022-44 regarding alone chickens in the city. So I am recommending for those who are interested in updates on this committee, making sure you check in with the city website and social media later this week regarding that committee. Next up, we have the legislative update. Councilman Borowski.
Thank you, Council President. State lawmakers introduced a bill to prevent the state's medical marijuana laws that would create a new state agency to oversee the program. Senate Bill 9 was introduced on January 11th, and on this past Tuesday was referred to a legislative committee for consideration. The bill is similar to another proposal from the last session, Senate Bill 261, that failed to gain approval in the Ohio House of Representatives after passing in the Senate of December 21. Both pieces of legislation attempt to update our medical marijuana law, which was passed by the General Assembly in 16. Under the new law, a new state agency, the Division of Marijuana Control, would be created as part of the Ohio Department of Commerce to regulate the state's medical marijuana program. The legislation also creates a 13-member commission responsible for oversight of the new agency and the medical program. Under current law, the state's medical marijuana program is overseen by the Ohio Department of Commerce, State Medical Board of Ohio, and the Ohio Board of Pharmacy. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have Planning Commission, Councilwoman Sue Grodick.
Thank you. Planning Commission will meet on Wednesday, February 1st at 6:00 p.m. There currently is one item on the agenda. It is a request from Fast Signs and Jealousy Auto Detailing for a sign package at 7323 Clinton Road. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have School Board liaison, Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. The school board met Tuesday, January 18th at 6:00 p.m. I was not in attendance because we had interviews for the council vacancy that evening, but I do have a report. They approved minutes, financial reports. They approved an MOU with the Brooklyn Education Association. 184 total days remain. However, there was a change in some of the language for the 2023-2024 school year that the number of days students are in session goes from 180 days to not less than 176. In-service days go from two to no more than four and a half, and record days go from two to no more than 3.5. They approved the 2023-2024 school year calendar. They revised various job descriptions for some of the classified staff. They approved administrative contracts for three years with the principal of the high school, the assistant principal, who's also the athletic director, and the assistant principal of the elementary school. Then there were some exempt contracts for the following positions, Secretary of Support Services, Assistant Treasurer I, and Assistant Treasurer II. They approved some supplemental contracts for some coaches. They approved another MOU with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters, Local 436, and that is the bargaining unit that covers the classified staff. And in the contract, there are two appendancies that set forth the salary schedule for staff hired either prior to or after July 1st of 2002. And the MOU clarifies that the substitution procedures when staff sub in a different position that they normally work. They also approved membership in the OSBA, which is the Ohio School Boards Association, approved a contract with John Scott as a financial consultant/interim treasurer through July 31st. The next meeting is Tuesday, February 7th at 6:00 p.m. in the treasurer's conference room. That completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we do have Committee of the Whole. We met tonight at 6:15. We did, council did recommend to confirm the appointment of the Planning Commission for Philip Smith. We recommended a position of no objection for the liquor license request on tonight's agenda. Additionally, we talked about both old and new business that is on tonight's agenda, including ordinance 2022-50, the life force management, which is up for third reading and adoption tonight. Council recommended that we do adopt this legislation. And on a new business, Resolution 2023-1, regarding the fact-finding report for the police, is on first reading but recommended adoption through suspension of the rules due to the timeliness issue for this piece of legislation. And council did recommend that we adopt tonight. For, additionally, the mayor did give an update on multiple items, which he will touch on in his report. One is regarding the city of Bedford, did unanimously pass for the shared services contract that we did pass at our last meeting as well. So he will give an update on all of the other items in his mayor's report tonight. Committee of the Whole meets before every regularly scheduled council meeting at 6:15 in council chambers. And we have a Board of Zoning Appeals update, Councilwoman Sue Grodick.
Thank you. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on January 19th and approved the following items. First was a request from CESCO Imaging Company for the variance for freestanding sign at the Well Now Urgent Care and Aspen Dental at 4630 Ridge Road. Another request from the same company for the same property for a 35-foot variance to the minimum requirement of 70 feet from a residentially zoned property. Again, that is 4630 Ridge Road. A third variance from the same company from the same property for an additional freestanding sign variance for Well Now Urgent Care Center, Urgent Care, and Aspen Dental at 4630 Ridge Road. A request from Archer Sign Corporation for a variance for an additional 58 square feet to the allowable 232 square feet of signage for TGI Fridays at 10320 Cascade Crossing. Another request from the same company for the same property for seven extra signs to the allowable of one on the building face for TGI Fridays at 10320 Cascade Crossing. And that is the end of their agenda. Again, I spoke about this when I, two weeks ago, when I was reading their proposed agenda. Several of the items that are on requesting variances are sort of caught in a crossroads of what our new zoning code will say and what our old one says now. So they are complying with what we would like to see our zoning code to be in the future, but it does require a variance now. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will now move on with reports of council. We begin this evening with Councilman Sillhards.
Thank you. Good evening. First of all, welcome to our newest member of city council, Mr. Stephen Coyle. Wish you success on this newest chapter in your life. You will do good, without a doubt. Thank you to all those that submitted an application and to those that interviewed. It was not a guaranteed pick, and it was even a little bit closer than you might want to think. There were a good number of great candidates, and even if you were not chosen, please stay involved with the city. What was great to see was there were new faces, and with some of them were even younger faces, younger, which is super. On Wednesday, July 13th, city council had a Zoom meeting to discuss a few items. One of them was the LED streetlights, which I haven't talked about for like a while, which we approved with first energy. The next step at that meeting was to get an invoice. Well, finally, I can say that Friday the 13th of this year, January 2023, six months later, we got that accomplished. Hopefully, the installation goes a little bit smoother. It's been a painful process, and had six months, to say the least. Thank you to Phil and the crew over at Penzico Trailer for getting one of the two issues on Brookway resolved today. Hopefully, the residents will be happy with that. It took a little bit longer than it should have. Brooklyn Athletic Boosters and Post-Prom Committee are holding their night at the races on February 25th, 2023, at the UAW Hall on Chevy Boulevard. They are now longer accepting ticket table requests for tonight at races. As of this past evening, they're sold out, so it's good news. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. First, I'd like to offer my condolences to the Marino and Miranda families on the passing of their husband, father, and grandfather, Mr. Gino Marino. Mr. Marino was a longtime resident, and he was active in our men's bocce ball group. And my condolences also to the Grodick family on the loss of Sue's father-in-law. On a happier note, congratulations to our newest member, Mr. Coyle. I'm very happy you're here, and I look forward to working with you. I'm also very grateful to the 10 residents who applied for the vacancy. And I mentioned that evening that we were so impressed with each and every one of these applicants. We had really good discussions with them individually. All of the applicants are passionate about Brooklyn and committed to our community. They want to help make it a better place. Thank you again, and please do not be discouraged. Stay or get active in our community and watch for other opportunities on the various boards or committees. Let's see. The Charter Review Commission had their first meeting this evening at 5:00. I think they're off to a really good start, and I'd like to thank all those who agreed to serve in this very important role. The Brooklyn Community Improvement Corporation will have their annual meeting on Monday, February 6th at 5:30 via Zoom, and there will be a link if the public is interested in being a part of that meeting. And regarding the question on the chickens, on what research I've done, this is not the first time it's come up when I've been on council, and back then, I did do a lot of extensive research, and I'm in the process of updating that because, you know, there's always new information out there and things do change. And I'm also, I've also been exploring information from organizations that promote backyard chickens and also the ordinances in other cities. That completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Councilman Borowski.
Thank you, Council President. I will follow that up, Ms. Pucci's comments on the chickens. I've spoken with city lawmakers out of Lakewood and Seven Hills. I've looked at ordinances from Independence, Lakewood, multiple cities. And I had a half-hour conversation on the phone with our newly-elected state representative when he was mayor and on city council in Seven Hills. Their chicken ordinance took six months to write three different writings, so we're at the beginning of this. And obviously, we will be looking at it with all eyes and ears on what the residents feel and what even our animal control officer feels, and we'll go from there at our safety meeting. Jack from the rec department reached out to me. Last city council meeting, I had spoken about a community garden, and he said that they are working, partnering with a new landscaper that hasn't worked on a community garden before, but they're actually excited about the idea to work with the city on that. So that's something that we'll have to keep an update on. And then also, when it comes to other matters, the other day, I had a conversation with State Senator Matt Dolan about the high theft rate of catalytic converters from trucks, especially like those in industrial parkways in Cuyahoga County, and whether or not our state assembly could do something more, such as tougher penalties, fines on criminals for cutting them off and the scrap yards that are behind them. I've already spoken with police out in Lakewood about it, and I'll be reaching out to our police chief and our detectives about it. According to the National Insurance Crime Bureau, over the last three years, there's been a 325% increase in the theft of these converters. So I will keep you updated on that as well as I continue working with State Senator Matt Dolan on that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Good evening. We would like to congratulate Stephen Coyle on his newly-appointed council seat. I know you will work diligently to serve our Brooklyn community, and I look forward to working with you in city council. The next thing I want to bring up is, Mr. Slattery brought up a couple of issues. One of them, and I believe, so this doesn't get out of control, mayor, and takes the union to get involved too, to sit down with management and find out what's going on in the situation going over at the city garage. I believe we have management rights, we can set up a workshop and go over the issues if they are, in fact, ongoing. Mayor.
I, this is the first I've heard of those issues. That was literally my first day here, so that was the first I heard of it.
And the second thing is the, and I brought this up before, and Mr. Slattery hit on it, but I'm getting more and more calls of cars being broken into, Cadillac converters being cut off now from our companies in the city. Our police officers are down because of injuries or because of whatever it may be. This has to be brought up in a more serious fashion, and I would like to get that on the safety committee, when we have a safety committee. About the personnel, not up to, well, 35. I mean, he's mentioned everybody else, brought up the 35, but there are positions of patrol officers out. So they're, I'm getting, like I said, I'm getting call-ins from the residents. Two or three of them already on bid off, being broken into. And I believe, I've always believed that we should up our patrols through the neighborhoods. I remember when I first moved in, John Coyne was the mayor, and I seen a police car come up my street every 30 minutes. I don't see that anymore, and I'm not kidding, every 20, 30 minutes. Well, I know they're looking for, we got them out looking for speeders, and we got them on Ridge Road and Clinton, because I do see them. But if these break-ins are increasing, which I've never gotten as many calls as I'm getting now, and I'm hearing our companies in the city are losing converters, and I'm hearing residents are the same, I don't understand that because if you cut off a converter and you take it to any scrapyard, that scrapyard's supposed to take your driver's license and enter it in the computer. Picture's supposed to be taken of that Cadillac converter to find out where they are coming are coming from. I think the state's involved in it, I'm not sure. So if converters are being taken off and they're being taken in by the dozens, hundreds, or whatever, they can find out where those converters are coming from, whether they got numbers on them or that person's bringing in multiple converters. So that's why the licenses and pictures of those licenses, when you take scrap in the scrapyard, is being taken. They're being taken for a reason, to try to track where this scrap is coming from, whether they are the converters. So I appreciate it, Councilman Borowski, that bringing that up, because it is happening. So make sure that as far as the patrol officers, the police gets put on the Safety Committee. We haven't had a date on that Safety Committee yet.
We're choosing committees.
When we get a committee, we haven't set up a date yet, and I believe there's more stuff on that agenda. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sue Brodic.
Thank you. Just very briefly, I would like to wish our families in Brooklyn who celebrate Lunar New Year a Happy New Year. It started yesterday. The more I learn about Lunar New Year, the more I appreciate the customs that I see being brought from Asian countries into our country. It is a wonderful time of celebration for these families and increasingly more fun celebration for all of us who are interested in it. So Happy Lunar New Year to those who celebrate. I also would like to wish my congratulations to Stephen Coyle, and I also would like to bestow congratulations from both of my sons, Teddy and Danny. They were both classmates. Danny graduated with Stephen Coyle, and Danny reminded me today that Stephen Coyle was at his first birthday party. So Stephen and I go back a long way. Congratulations, and I look forward to working with you. And I also, I also said this at our open session when we elected Stephen. The residents that put themselves out to make the time to contact us and say they were interested and to sit and talk with us about their passion for Brooklyn, hands down, that's what came across to all of us over and over and over and over again. And it was so heartfelt from everyone who was speaking to us. Different ideologies, different views, different visions for our city, but the passion was there, and that was just so uplifting to see and to feel over those two evenings of interviews. So I greatly appreciate being present to listen to you speak with passion about our city. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Councilman Coyle.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Stephen Coyle, and I'm a lifelong resident and graduate of Brooklyn High School and Cleveland State University. Currently, I'm the store leader at the North Ridgeville Giant Eagle. For the last five years, I've been serving on the city's Planning Commission, and some of you may also recognize me from my campaign during the 2021 November election. I am truly honored to have been appointed to this position, and I look forward to serving the community that I grew up in. I'd like to thank my fellow council members for this opportunity as well as their support and advice. Lastly, I'd also like to specifically thank Meg and Mary Jo for putting together everything that I needed to hit the ground running. Later this week, my contact information should be posted to the city's website. Please do not hesitate to reach out. That's all I have for today, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Good job. I just want to echo what everybody else said up here regarding, first off, congratulations, Stephen. I know I've gotten to know you a little bit over the years, and I look forward to continuing to work with you in this official capacity, and I know that you'll do great things up here. And also, you know, we did have a lot of quality and very good candidates, some of which I knew a little bit of and some of which I met for the first time in the interview. And we did all echo up here before taking the vote that we do want each of the candidates to stay engaged, stay involved, and it does show tonight, we do have one of those candidates on tonight's agenda to hopefully be appointed to the Planning Commission seat. So I hope you are one of the first of many to become both officially and unofficially involved in our community. And I do just want to bring up one other thing. Hurricane Heritage Week is occurring from January 30th through February 3rd, and this is a week that the schools started, and they've held it in the past, and then, you know, COVID kind of paused everything for a while, and it's coming back this year, as well as the library and the city getting involved. And so the city, I did, I asked City Council members to create short videos that will be displayed at the school to the students regarding either what heritage means to them or a little bit about themselves and their heritage. And the library is also hosting a number of events and incorporating this diversity and celebration aspect and heritage aspect with their regularly scheduled and a little bit of other not fully regularly scheduled meetings that they, events that they hold within the community. So between January 30th and February 3rd, I believe their Facebook page, or I'll hope to get it on our Facebook page, will have more information about how it's relating back to Hurricane Heritage Week, but definitely do check it out at the library as well. That's welcome to everybody of all ages, and I know one of the things they'll have is a map where people can pinpoint where their family comes from. So I hope this is the first year of many to bring this event back and really celebrate the diversity and various cultures that are within our community here in Brooklyn. And that is all for council reports. Next up, Mayor Van Kirk.
Thank you, Council President. Not to beat a dead horse, but also want to welcome Mr. Coyle. I had the chance to soar him in right before our council meeting, so I look forward to working with you on council. Thank you for your willingness. And as Meg mentioned, I served on council for 11 years. It's hard to believe that it was that long. It went by so quickly, but it's always good to see so many residents. I needed to appoint a couple of people when I was on council. I don't think we ever had this many applicants for the position. I think we had 10 that applied for it, so that's a great thing, and so it's good to see people engage in our city, and I think council has chosen well. So, Mr. Coyle, glad to have you onboard. Just a couple of things to follow up from the previous meeting. Council did pass ordinance 2023-1 at the last meeting. That was the shared services with the city of Bedford for the building commissioner. That position is currently vacant right now in the city as our building commissioner left to work for Strongsville. The city of Bedford found itself in a similar situation, and they have not actually had a building commissioner, I think, since October of last year. And so we worked out a piece of legislation to have the joint services with them. Our council passed it last meeting. Bedford, as the council president mentioned, passed it the following week, and so the position is now posted, and it will stay posted until the position is filled. Of course, that does take council approval, and so all that information will, of course, be given to council and have a chance to ask questions, et cetera. So I look forward to seeing that position filled. Another thing that was measured the last meeting was the potential for $100,000 in ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan funds. Mr. Abruzzi went down to the county building this last week to present Brooklyn's plan. It was adopted, it was approved, and so $100,000 will be coming our way to help offset the cost of the trails that are ongoing in Memorial Park. The streets program, we hope to have updated numbers as far as what that's going to cost to get the final streets out that we'll be doing this spring. We hope to have that out for bid coming up in early February. Good news for everyone that lives in the city of Brooklyn and drives through the city of Brooklyn, the Memphis Bridge by Kitty Park will be reopening on Monday, January 30th, so one week from when this meeting is taking place, that will be opened up. Just a couple of things that highlights what went on there. They started the utility relocation all the way back in August of 2020, and now the full, where the bridge was closed in May of last year and is set to reopen, the bridge pathway will go from, or width, I should say, will go from 44 feet to 52 feet. The sidewalk will increase from 5'4" to 6 feet, and then, not this really affects any of us, but the railroad height underneath goes from 21/8 to 23 feet on there. This will be a nice concrete covering that will be on the outside of that. It's much nicer looking than what you would see in most bridges. And again, that will open to two-way traffic on next Monday. There is some additional work that will need to take place in the spring, but that will not affect the remaining open to traffic. Had a chance to tour the city center today with one of our inspectors, and work is coming along nicely. We hope to be able to stick with the schedule that we have now. It's not to keep reiterating the same thing over and over, and we have had issues getting certain parts, supply chain issues with that, as we're hoping to be able to get the last electrical components next month to be able to continue that. As part of that, we're going to be upgrading the Memorial Plaza, which is currently located right outside of City Hall, and that's going to be relocated to a more desirable place, which is going to be over here where the airplane is, potentially. And so we are working on drafting a plan with a landscape architect to really make that plaza really stand out in Memorial Park, and of course, that will require council approval, so we'll be seeking counsel on that, whatever we have the plan put together. To address some of the concerns that were mentioned, I also, oh, I want to thank Mr. Selhertz. When he said this has been a long, painful process, he was not exaggerating with the lighting. He has worked on this for two years, and I have had countless emails and conversations from him. I cannot imagine all the work that he's put in on that, so hopefully, we'll be seeing some headway with that. In regards to the Police Department, there is a police task that is getting ready to be given to, of course, to hire new officers as required. We did give one, I don't remember the exact date, sometime late last year, and there were only four that, or six that took it, four that were, that passed it, so we are going to be giving another test here shortly in order to fill those positions of the one retiring and the one disability that was mentioned. As far as going, ongoing staffing issues, that's certainly something that council can discuss. We did just have our budget work sessions last year where we did discuss staffing for 2023. In regards to the Fire Department, as far as I'm aware of, this will cover all of the issues and even more. The leaking issues that were uncovered were only on two sides of the department. However, we are going to be doing, I won't go into all the details again, but the entire wall structure worked for that to make sure that those issues are resolved. As far as why it happened, not trying to throw anything under the bus here, but basically it was due to poor construction. There wasn't that extra, I forget what the actual terminology for it is, yeah, gen or whatever wall inside of there to allow that moisture to escape, and so that, of course, that was before, it was long ago before most of us were up here on council. I am not aware of any other issues. To answer the question if there are any other issues, if there are, I certainly hope that they're brought to our attention. But as far as I know, once we get this out to bid and once this work is completed, that will take care of all the issues that we have as far as the Fire Department building goes. Lastly, on a kind of a cool note here, this, residents know that we have done some surveys here recently in the city of Brooklyn, and the company that we work with is called ETC Institute, and we were actually awarded the Leading the Way Award from ETC Institute because the city of Brooklyn fell within the top 10% of all local governments in regards to our performance based upon the satisfaction with the overall quality of services, the satisfaction with customer service provided by the employees, and satisfaction with the value residents think they receive for their local taxes and fees. In order to do this, you have to receive a composite score of 210 at least, and we received one of 229. And so that was 53 points higher than the national average for all the cities in the U.S. that were part of this, and so congratulations, City of Brooklyn. It's very, it's good to see that the services are appreciated here, and so if you would like to see that award, it's very heavy. It's sitting out on the reception desk. It weighs 11 pounds to represent the 11 cities that were part of their first survey back from 2000. Let's see here. I believe that covers everything that I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up, we have Director's Reports. We're going to start this evening with Finance Director Ragus.
Good evening. Just one item for me tonight, just an overview of the General Fund financial statements for year-end 2022. On the revenue side, overall revenues are, were 110% of the estimated amount, also an 8% decrease from prior due to a decrease of income tax revenue of $2.25 million as compared to 2021. As it's been consistent through 2022, the reasons for the decrease in income taxes are twofold. Net decrease in one-time revenue that we received of $1.5 million, and then a large employer withholding loss of over $1 million. On the bottom half of the income statement, on the commitments, overall commitments are 97% of the amended budget amount and 9% more than compared to 2021. Now, when we talked, when we had budget work sessions in November, we talked about we were projecting a financial surplus for 2022 and what we're going to do with that money. So it was much in line with what we discussed. So with the general fund surplus for 2022, we advanced $559,000 to the Capital Reserve Fund to pay off bond anticipation notes for the recreation center roof. We transferred $1.3 million to the TIP Fund to pay off the bond anticipation note for the American Road Project, and we also transferred an additional $1.8 million to the Capital Reserve Fund to set aside money for future recreational center needs that are currently unfunded, that are part of the capital improvement bond of over $10 million, but that do not have a funding source currently with it, because we cannot afford it within our current revenue sources within the capital improvement fund. So the $1.8 million represents the maximum amount allotted by ordinance that was passed by City Council as part of the appropriation ordinance in December. So overall, it went pretty much in line with what we anticipated as far as when we talked about it in October, November of last year. We also received our income tax revenue from RITA in January, a total distribution amount of $1.4 million, which is $143,000 more than January of 2023. Of that amount, $124,000 is attributed to an increase in withholding on income tax revenue. So overall, a positive on the general fund. We were able to set aside money for recreational center needs, and we're able to pay off our bond anticipation notes that we talked about at over, at about $2 million. So right now, we just have long-term obligations regarding the fire station that we're paying off in 2027, and then the city center project that we're paying off until 2046. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions from City Council?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And next, we have Law Director Butler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to the clerk, you might want to put the five-minute timer up. I am reporting just on three items tonight, two of which are property-related. The first is that we are gearing up to sell the site on which we sit right now to the county library system. You know, you've got legislation pending tonight that involves that sale. County Library is right now working through the necessary obligations it has in order to create a lot split from the remainder of the city's site, includes Memorial Park, and is working through that. I'll continue to update council on progress with respect to that lot split. Second item is that we have resolved the lien issues that were holding up the city's purchase of a residential home, catty-corner to us on Memphis, next to the rec center, and we are now cleared to actually close on that transaction. So it will not be long before that actually occurs, and the city is then the owner of that property and can resolve the outstanding code and nuisance issues that attend that property right now. The final item is not property-related. It's just an add-on to some of the other mentions tonight of the Charter Commission. I was very proud to introduce the process tonight in front of your appointees to the commission, all of whom are, at least those seven who were there of the nine, two couldn't make it. Were really a joy to get to know, and I look forward to continuing to work with them, and Mary Jo as well, who's going to be with me in that process. Our next meeting is going to be February 13 at 5:30. We'll try to be prompt so that we can adjourn by 6:15. Thanks.
Thank you so much. We will now move on with legislation. First up, we have council confirmations. Request by Mayor Van Kirk to appoint Philip Smith to the Planning Commission for the unexpired term of Stephen Coyle's that ends 12/31/2025.
Move to confirm Mr. Smith for the Planning Commission for the unexpired term. May I be recognized?
Yes.
I just want to reiterate something that I said in the committee of the whole, and that is that I have absolutely no objection to confirming him on the Planning Commission. However, I do think it's important that we follow what has been an established practice that when we have a vacancy, that we do get the word out there and give residents an opportunity to submit their letters of interest and resumes. So I hope that we're going to continue that in the future. Thank you.
To confirm the appointment, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Poochie.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Brodic.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Next up, we have a request for a liquor license approval for a liquor permit. This is a transfer, and Chief Milky has indicated he has no issues with this transfer.
Motion for a position of no objection.
Second.
Can we read what the business and the address?
Yes, I was just looking to pull it up. It is the business at 7460 Memphis Avenue transferring from Shiv Shambu LLC to a Perfect T&amp;S Inc.
That does it, ma'am.
I'm sorry. From Perfect T&amp;S Inc. at the Dairy Mart at 7460 to Shiv Shambu LLC at DBA Tony's Deli Mart. To give a position of no objection, Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brodick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Under old legislation, we have ordinance 2022-50, which is up for third reading and adoption tonight, authorizing the mayor of the city of Brooklyn, Ohio to authorize an amended fee schedule with Life Force Management, Inc. for third-party EMS and ambulance billing and directing Life Force Management, Inc. to bill non-residents for unreimbursed EMS and ambulance charges. And just a reminder for residents, we have talked about this a few times, but this is an increase of 23%, which is in line with the cost increase that we are seeing to provide the services of EMS and this is for non-residents who have private insurance. Make a motion that we approve?
Second.
To adopt, Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brodick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
On second reading tonight is ordinance 2023-2, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Cuyahoga County Public Library for the sale of certain real property known as portion, as a portion of 7619 Memphis Avenue, permanent parcel 432-24-0009, known further as the city hall site for the construction of a library. On second reading tonight is also ordinance 2023-4, amending section 121.02 of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn by amending various rules of council. Under new business tonight is resolution 2023-1. It is on first reading, but administration's looking to request by suspension, looking to adopt by request of suspension of the rules, accepting the report containing findings and recommendations of fact-finder Jeffrey A. Belkin regarding negotiations between the city of Brooklyn and the Ohio Patrolmen's Benefilent Association for the 2023 third year wage re-opener within the collective bargaining agreements covering the employees and the classifications of full-time patrol officers, full-time sergeants and lieutenants and full-time jailers in the city's police department and declaring an emergency. Just a little bit of quick background on this, the administration and police union were unable to come up to an agreement with the wage re-opener. So we did, this did lead to a fact-finding. The fact-finder did recommend a 3% wage increase, which is the same that ASME received late last year that both ASME and council passed in, I believe, October.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Just to give an update as to why we're passing by emergency, we have seven days to act on this and of course, that's, that's not enough time between now and our next council meeting, so that's why I'm by emergency.
Thank you.
Move to adopt under suspension of the rules?
Second. To suspend the rules, Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brodick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
To adopt, Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brodick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Does anyone else on council or the mayor have anything to add?
Thank council for their confirmation of Mr. Smith to the planning commission. I appreciate that and also thank you for passing the legislation in regards to the wage re-opener.
I did just want to add one thing. Philip Smith, who we did appoint today to the planning commission, was one of the candidates that we had interviewed for the vacant council position. So again, Philip, congratulations and thank you for taking this next step to continue to be involved in the city of Brooklyn. Make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
To adjourn, Andy Selhertz?